Well, good evening, everyone. Today is Tuesday, June ninth, and it's Nacusa School District's monthly meeting. And we'll get started with a roll call. Mr. Clerk?
Wayne Freeman.
Present.
David Schmidt. Here. I am here. Brian Geezy.
Present.
And Doug Houston.
Present. And we'll stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And as with every meeting, we have a virtue card reading. Kindness. Kindness is showing you care, doing some good to make life better for others. Be thoughtful about people's needs. Show love and compassion to someone who is sad or needs your help. When you are tempted to be cruel, to criticize or tease, decide to be kind instead. You are practicing kindness when you give tender attention to those who need help. Do thoughtful things to give others happiness. Practice habits that help the environment. Resist the temptation to be cruel. Accept people who are different. Affirmation: I am kind. I show compassion to others. I have the courage to show that I care. Kindness. Thank you. And I'd like to read our school district Nacusa Board of Education guidelines. These are guidelines that we wrote in September of 2012. The first guideline: We will work together as a team, establishing an environment of trust and respect, which will serve as a role model for the community despite the challenges. Second guideline: We will balance the needs of our district while remaining cognizant of our community's ability for financial support. And our third guideline: We will work collaboratively toward the common goal of student learning, educational innovation, and instilling the desire of lifelong learning with the involvement of community stakeholders. So those are our Board of Education guidelines. Next on the agenda, as always, we have public comments. Would anybody like to make a comment? Anyone? We don't have tapers today. Okay. All right. Then we'll move on with staff-student presentation. Mr. Whitmore, what is planned for this evening?
We don't have anything specifically planned, do we? Mrs. Parkinson? No, right?
No.
But we would hear some words from CWSA if you've got a few little updates or something that might jump out at you.
Um, I'm not sure. I thought a couple others were supposed to be here too because there was some reason to be here.
Any hot topics over there?
Um, the school year ended good. Um, I think we are working on our, um, as a council, we're working on our presentation or something that we're supposed to be giving to you guys.
Mm-hmm.
I think that might have been why we were supposed to be here. Um, and we're working on it. So I think at the next school board meeting, we will be...
Yep, an annual report.
Yes, that's what it is.
Yep.
Um, we will be presenting that at the next school.
Awesome.
I believe. Do not, it's not written in stone.
You know, another exciting thing, and I don't know if I mentioned this to you, but the state came forward and there's some monies left over from all the planning and implementation grants from last year or this last school year. So they're offering a competitive opportunity to all new charter schools that are in their implementation year. So next year will be an implementation renewal. So they're looking at three to four grants being awarded out of fifteen. So they're expecting fifteen applications. They're going to be able to award three or four applications. So Nathan and Clint are moving on that and...
So what's the dollar value for that?
Same dollar value, so it's a hundred and fifty thousand for our school, our size. Yeah, so it's exciting.
We have a couple of guests here tonight that we should introduce or have them introduce themselves. Kim and her son.
Hi, Kim Copeland and Sawyer Copeland. We're here tonight because Sawyer is a Boy Scout and he goes to Solmas Camp in a couple weeks and he is working on a badge and he needs to attend a public hearing or meeting there. So...
Well, thank you for choosing a school board meeting. Awesome. So if you have any questions as the night goes on, please ask, okay? All right? So with that, we can move on.
Okay. Next on the agenda then is the...
Working that one next.
So administrators, who would like to start?
I'll quickly go. I guess the place to start with, we had a nice promotion ceremony for our eighth graders here at the end of the week last week and really right now we're in the process of also looking at and doing a little bit of planning as we move into next year in terms of finishing up and refining our goals, our building goals and what that process looks like. And those are a couple of highlights right now. Nacusa Community School, we're, we'll also give an annual report, but that'll be later this summer. We're not on the calendar right now also, and that'll be something we'll hear from later. I am meeting with the teachers and/or Nathan or and/or I, we're meeting with our PLC teams to be talking about, you know, looking back on the data from this year, looking ahead to the data we're getting next year and analyzing that and working on that. Here's our course essentials, what challenges and trends are we seeing right now? So that's kind of a goal for this...
SLO.
Yep, SLO, so that's where we're at right now.
Thanks, Jeff.
Couple, couple things to point out. The high school, of course, a week ago, on last Sunday, we sent another class into the real world, a graduation ceremony. Last Thursday, as most of you are aware, we had the "The May Move" where we had clear everything out to the gyms and it went extremely well, surprisingly well. And the building, starting yesterday and progressing even more today, looks like a war zone. But Ike is keeping the, keeping the troops in line. A lot of things, a lot of, a lot of neat things happening already and I'm kind of anxious to see what it's going to be on the other end when it's, when it's back and put, put back together. Yesterday, we interviewed candidates for our two cross-categorical special ed position. We're working on reference checks today and that's progressing quite well. Uh, I don't know if, if all of you or any of you heard that our track athletes that participated in the state meet, Ben Eisenstein added two more gold medals to his, his gold medalist, thirty-two-hundred meter and the sixteen-hundred meter. Thirty-two-hundred meter, he broke a state record that had been in place since nineteen-eighty-one. Cassie Spees, third in her hurdles event, and Kaylee Johnson, seventh in the discus.
Nice.
So Keith, you're on.
Well, we, we wrapped up a successful year. We had our end-of-year picnic, which is always a fun time in families. We had over a hundred guests come for the end-of-year picnic. And then we're also in the process of hiring new teachers. In fact, we have three that will be up tonight. I didn't, didn't get them in in time, but I'm...
I've got, I've got some paperwork.
Yeah, and the other one I forgot to grab off the printer. But that is, that's been a big part of our, you know, consuming a lot. We've really been using an exciting interview process that I think has been very thorough, involving Mr. Whitmore on a, on a different end of the interview process than what he has been before. And then we're also going to be starting action plan, working on our, planning on our action plan for next year. June twenty-ninth, we'll be meeting as a group to start on that. Coming after sale, which we're all going to be at next week, looking at our data and kind of formulating plans and then looking ahead to next year as we get ready. Summer school is coming up quickly, July sixth, still time. And tomorrow, we have a great book giveaway at Humke.
It's already here.
In the shelter. It's already here.
Wow.
So, um, all kinds of things going on. But anyone listening in the community access world, there's still time to register for summer school, so please get those registrations in. And that, our registration is going wild for summer school, so that is what I've got.
Good, thank you.
With you, I'm trying to...
Yeah, just a quick note is that, you know, at, with the end of this last school year, this is the first year of educator effectiveness in which student, teachers were asked to create student learning objectives and, you know, ways to, and track those over the course of the year. And it's been interesting talking with various teachers of, talking about how that process and for some of them says this is the first time we've looked at data this way, but really saw some, you know, heard a couple stories about how some teachers were saying, you know, these, these gains that we've seen in this area, we've never seen before. And because it's a lot more area of TART focusing specifically on important things for students to be working and tracking that data and responding to it just in time over the course of the year is more, these type of things have always been happening, but really in a targeted, data-driven way, has really led to some really strong gains in several areas. And so it's just, as a whole district, it's different, a lot of more confidence with people wrapping up the process and a lot, a lot of success stories that have come from it. So that's been heartening to see.
Thank you. I thought you mentioned something that Mike forgot to mention or didn't, didn't mention.
I was, I was going to put it, but go ahead.
We, we, we had a school improvement meeting this morning that Mike and, and Mr. Black were both at, and I thought it went really well.
I did too.
We had some very open conversation with the staff members that were there, which was very refreshing to me because in the past years, they've been very reserved as far as their comments when there were administrators in the room and even board members in the rooms, they just haven't been able to share their thoughts. And today, they were just very open. They voiced some concerns and some comments that they had, some, some successes and it was a very good meeting. I think we accomplished quite a bit.
Awesome. Good.
For our school nutrition, Chef Matt is participating in the fundraiser next Thursday as a iron chef. Terry and I will be attending that fundraiser. And also tonight, he is actually conducting a adult class for, for the community. They're making salads tonight, so...
I saw quite a few cars over there.
Yeah, he's a very popular guy when it comes to those cooking classes. Everybody wants to be in those cooking classes with him. The transportation, they're already planning for next year. Ian is preparing the final numbers for submission to DPI, so I'll be submitting that shortly. And we're also planning the roads for next year. For the technology department, I know they've been working with Nexus to making sure that all the technology is in order in regards at the high school. All the smart boards are down, everybody, everything is labeled properly, so what comes out of a room, the proper equipment goes back into the room. So they've been working mega overtime just to get some of that done. The buildings and grounds department, we're conducting interviews this Thursday for the Nacusa High School coordinator position, and I think we're interviewing five candidates. So I'll be bringing that, that name to you in July. The business office, we are preparing for our final, closing our books, and our audit is going to be conducted the last week of July. So this is my cranky time. Everybody knows that, so, and they, they just deal with me, so...
Ike's laughing back there.
Because I'm cranking poor. So as, I mean, it, there's a lot of new regs that are coming down the pike and the auditors are going to be expected to look at some of those regs. And I'm, I don't have a comfort level yet, but I will have one by the end of July, so that's it.
Thank you.
And then I'd like to end with this week, Friday, Diane is going to be here. We're going to be finishing up the work that we've started out at Camp Alexander, so we're excited about that. And then we're really trying to take a look at putting the pieces together for educator effectiveness across the whole district. And so we've got that mapped out. Diana's helped out with that. And I don't know if I've shared that with you yet, so I'll bring that forward too at the same time. But you know how we had talked about when we did the retreat, as we were studying that, we need a map of, you know, how does this fit with teachers, principals, you know, that, my, my evaluation? So we're working on that. And then at the same time, next week, we're going to sale to really take a look at, like Keith had mentioned, the data around the district. And all of our staff have done a pretty thorough survey of just the operations, the daily operations of the district related to assessment, related to, there's some, on their social emotional learning, all of the pieces that we've been talking about. So have, have any of you had a chance to look at any of that data yet?
Yeah.
So all of us, Dave, do you want to say anything about how comprehensive it is?
Well, it's really, it's an interesting, it has five domains, and then they separate. One is focus on learning, one is clear, consistent expectations, nested learning communities. But then you can dig down deeper and drill down and they get into subdomains. And then what's nice about it is it will also give you, it tells you the average score for the people that have taken it in, in a building, but then it also gives you the call average, so based on all of the people who have done it. But then it also has a button you can click on and it gives feedback. So it tells you if this is an area that you're looking to improve in, here are different possible strategies.
So it really gives you a, the high priority areas that you should be working in? So of course, that dovetails with our strategic plan and our driving statements, you know, we're going to have some good information. So it's really three days of planning and coaching and, you know, really getting ready for the upcoming year. So our hope is that by the end of July, we'll have pieces in place so that, you know, the board can really put their footprint on our plan moving forward.
Agreed.
Any questions on that?
I'd like to comment on Lynn's report there. I was going over the financials this morning, the treasurer's report and check registry, and it just boggles my mind that you can grasp all that stuff.
Yeah.
I just give you so much credit for it because there's just so much there to keep everything straight and put it in the right category and everything, so...
Well, thank you.
Good job.
It's, it's, it's easy for me to shine. I'm the only one in the district that does this, so...
Hey, could I just ask Brian to share one thing from an administrative perspective? He's been working on the school forest and we were, we had a pretty lengthy meeting today, and I don't know what else that would fit in, but Brian, would you mind sharing a few words on that?
Well, the school forest sign is up. We've been meeting with representatives from the DNR on UW Stevens Point. Does anybody have questions on where the school forest is? It's on Alpine Drive in the town of Rome. We were approached by the town of Rome and they're providing us some assistance, but at this time, the DNR has marked off the trees for the parking area. We're hoping to, hopefully going to get some people in there very early this summer, get those trees knocked down. Town of Rome would put the parking lot in. It's, it's pretty exciting. I know that the information has gone out to the teachers, but we really need to develop a timeline and what I think is going to happen. A lot of work from today's meeting.
So, yeah, we talked a little bit about the Chester School not being moved. Dave O'Sebrink was there today and, and, you know, offered some suggestions on how we might move forward. But really, it's developing a new structure out there, a new learning structure, perhaps using some of the old materials from the Chester School, but we don't know. You know, the cost, if the cost is prohibitive, that's going to be hard to do. So, but yeah, and so we're excited about, I think, where it's going and we've got some homework now you're rolling on. But the parking lot and the, and the, and the, it's going to be a U-shaped kind of a driveway, that's going to happen. And then also to add to that, John Thomas, who's teaching summer school, has, I had a conversation with him and he does geocaching. So we thought that could be a good partnership where he takes a geocaching class out there, works with Gretchen from UW Stevens Point and that Steve Grant, and they'll develop the, the trail system. So we'll see where that goes, but yeah, it's, it's, we got to just make it happen.
Are they planning another select cut out there or is it just where they're doing developments?
That's one of the things that we discussed today, you know, there's going to be a timber cut and we're looking at a one or two-year plan for that. So full development of the trail system may be somewhat limited due, you know, due to that cutting, but they indicated, I think, a willingness to work with us on that.
It seems like the back half of it is where there's a lot of...
Yeah, they were through their last...
Timber.
There were three people working there last Friday and they went through and marked, marked pretty much the whole property as far as, you know, the trees that, you know, need to come down. And, you know, really, it's a, it's a really comprehensive map, but yeah, selective cutting. We want to create open areas as well for new growth and to attract some of those wild species and plant life that we want.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Any other new business before we move on? Okay, next on the agenda then is a conversation around our performance contract with Nexus Solutions. And I'm just going to read this right out of our board packet because it has a pretty good explanation of it, of what we're talking about. And it's a consideration of amending the performance contract with Nexus Solutions to implement additional energy efficiency improvements. Remodeling and repairs to the district school and buildings and grounds, including but not limited to roof, window, wall, door repair and replacement, HVAC, boiler and electrical upgrades and improvements, environmental system and control upgrades, parking lot repairs and replacements, flooring replacements, safety and security improvements. The cost of the performance contract amendment will be recouped through energy and operational savings. And at this time, we have three gentlemen from Nexus Solutions, and I'd ask if you could introduce yourselves and then maybe, we are in, in, we've completed some parts of phase one already, and maybe you could kind of give us an overview of where we are right now.
Glad to do that. My name is Mike David, one of the principals of Nexus. With me is Ike McWaters, who is a site superintendent for Nexus. And then further to my right is Jeff Mangan, who's an accounting executive also with Nexus. Ike is literally a member of the community now. He's got himself planted here permanently, or at least during the duration of the project, and he's onsite every day. And Ike, if you want to just share with him kind of what's going on?
Yeah, so we're only two days into the official schedule. It's going really good. As Mike mentioned, the, the staff and the students were, were on board to help us move, get the rooms cleared out, and that went, went a long ways in helping us hit the road running come Monday morning. Lot of comments from the contractors how nice and ready the place was, so I do thank you guys for letting me do that. But I would say right now, we're about ninety, ninety-five percent done with the lower-level demo, so we should be able to start getting a lot of the mechanical stuff out of the way and the new stuff in and hopefully tracking towards schedule, we'll be giving you guys the rooms back and we can look at moving back in towards the first quarter of August. So so far, it's going really good. We've got, the health facility's open, so we've got community members that are coming in. Some of them want to, want tours, so I'm not having to say no, but if, you know, if any of the board members do want to see how it's going, we do have hard hats and if you check in at the office, my job trailer, I guess I should say, we can, we can help accommodate that, so just let me know. But it's going really good so far and we'll keep you posted.
And Ike, how often do you guys have project meetings?
Weekly meetings. Lynn and Terry have been involved. Mike's at the meetings. Every Wednesday at nine, we have project update meetings. They'll be held at the high school. Now we'll have a spot set aside for that, but, so if you are curious, you're, you're more than welcome to join those meetings too, so...
Brian, you've been attending those?
Nope, I didn't. I wasn't aware of those meetings until yesterday. And then for me, I think yesterday.
And Mike, could you give us a little background on the performance contract, please?
Sure. Um, as you know, we, we started this process a little over a year ago, about fourteen months ago. You went through a competitive selection process. Nexus was fortunate enough to be selected. We, we, just in effort to be able to get some work done in the summer of 2014, we structured the comprehensive plan as a two-phase plan. The first phase were things that we were able to address in a quicker manner, some roofing, windows, things like that that were less design intensive. And then we, we went to work on developing phase two. Phase two was developed over the summer of 2014, reviewed with the administration and with the board throughout the fall of '14, and then approved by the board by way of letter of intent. I believe it was late, it was December, December, January, December fourteenth or January fifteenth. From there, we moved right into the detailed design and went out and solicited bids on all the work, the majority of work, I should say, in the, in the spring here, spring, I guess it's, the spring or winter in spring of '15. And we're pretty excited in that right now, the project is, every project has challenges, that's what you hire us for. But right now, for all the bids that are awarded, the project is about a hundred and eighty-eight thousand under budget. That combined with the project contingency, you've, you've got about, we, we take the bid under it and we've rolled it into the contingency, but you've got about seven hundred and twenty-five thousand of contingency, so very healthy contingency, plus the, the district has its own district control contingency of about a hundred thousand. So financially, the project is in very good shape. We do have some challenges with one of the projects, so was kind of a miscope or some misunderstandings involving the auditorium. We're working on dialing that in, getting the pricing pulled in. We'll be pulling that back or bringing that back to the administration and to the board in the July, August timeframe. We'll submit some options there and, you know, it's, again, that's what you hire us to do is solve problems like that, so. Overall, again, things are in very, very good shape and the group's excited. As Ike said, we, we were talking beforehand, for these guys, it's all about getting off to a fast start because summer is short for everybody and our business is really short. There's about fifty-three working days and they use every single one of them. And the contractors are already talking about working Saturdays. Everybody understands the need of, hey, let's get out in front of it so that we're not sweating quite so much come late August. It will be, you, you made reference to that, that the buildings, you know, when, when you go through the demo, you take ceilings down, the buildings will look like a war zone. They are literally a hard hat zone, so they, they're, they're for, for safety purposes. It's going to be one of these things where when, when we get to August, it's going to be like, you know, how are they going to get this done? We will get it done, but it, there will, there will be some tense moments and then you have to communicate and, and which we do. And it'll be important, especially once the staff, once it starts coming back, to make sure that, that we communicate with them, we'll, we'll, we'll let them know what the timeframes are and that sort of thing, so. But again, overall, the guys are excited. It's just great to get off to a fast start. The amendment that you're, you're looking at tonight is, again, it's just kind of a little documentation for phase two. What we did was, what we're doing with it is we basically blend phase one and phase two together so that you doesn't have one project to work with, one, one contract to work with going forward. Okay? Questions?
Back in December, when we approved the letter of intent for phase two...
Yep.
The number that was in there, has that number changed with this addendum or are we still sticking with that number?
Nope, exact same number.
Okay.
The, the addendum, the total amount of phase one, phase two is, is it fourteen-nine-six-hundred five thousand?
I believe. I'm just looking at the phase two, which was twelve-nine.
Yeah, it's a, the, the number's exactly the same. We rounded it to the nearest five thousand. That would be the only change.
Yeah, okay. And I, I have been able to be part of the design meetings and I, I thank everybody very much for letting me be involved in that, you know, seeing, you know, how the staff works through that, you know, you guys, Keith, John, and, you know, your teams. That's been helpful. Appreciate it.
You're, you're very welcome. Again, it's our approach is to be completely transparent, so anyone's welcome to participate.
So you have some more roofing work to do at the middle school? Is that right?
I believe that that's correct, but I got to ask Ike.
That's, that's going on now.
Okay.
And that's, it should be wrapped up in the next week or two.
So there's, there's still gravel up on one part of that?
The gravel is off.
Oh, that's off now?
The new roof is should be, is being put on now.
Okay.
So the old roof was taken off during spring break.
So that gravel just disposed of or was it left in the parking lot like it was last time?
No, they, they removed that from the site.
They took it out, okay.
Come the fifteenth, right now is the schedule that they'll be starting on the high school roofing work, so we're moving on that too, so we get that done before, before school starts.
We got it on fast because I drove around there the other night. Scrabble was still on the roof, so...
They waste no time.
They're wasting time.
Ike, can you tell us the schedule for the windows at middle school?
Uh, yeah, June twenty-fourth. And John, he got an email today. It's a little delayed from what we had originally thought the windows would be arriving, but June twenty-fourth now is the scheduled delivery date. Chris was onsite. He's the PM for Omni Glass today, looking at schedules and stuff, so I do need to sit down with you at some point, if you have time, to look at summer school, where you're going to be at in, in the building, at cer, at which times, and then we'll plan around that. He plans on being able to do ten to twelve windows a day, which is good, so that should, should move things along very well. And so we should be able to stay out of the way of any kind of activities or classes that you have in the building during that time, so...
We could probably just sneak out of here when this is done real quick and have a quick conversation.
Yeah, yeah.
If you're okay with that.
Yeah, of course.
Appreciate all the work you're doing.
So what will happen then is Michael sent me a bound copy of the actual amendment and then I'll get the signatures for the bound copy. But we do need a motion then to, and I think I had it written out in my memo, recommend approval of the performance contract amendment and also recommend that school board adopt the resolution attached.
Do you want that in two motions or one?
You could combine it into both, or one motion if you'd like.
I will make a motion to affect that.
Okay, so we have a, we have a motion and we have a second?
Oh, second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, and that, we're going to take a roll call vote in this, I believe?
Sure.
Good idea.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Yes, for me, Mr. Geezy?
Yeah.
And Mr. Houston?
Yes, okay, so motion carried. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you for working with us very much.
Thanks.
Okay, next on the agenda is Consideration for Approval of Revised Twenty-Fourteen-Fifteen Budget. I believe Lynn will lead this discussion.
That would be me. By state statute, we are required to bring to the board any revisions for the current year's budget. We have one revision, and I believe this is a repeat from prior years, we always have the same revision. It's the Common School Fund grant. We typically don't receive that information until about April, so it's very difficult to budget for that. And I like to have my grants nice and neat and just very articulate, so I always do a budget revision for the Common School Fund. So I'm, I budgeted more in revenue, so I have to decrease my revenues by four-thousand-four-hundred-seven dollars and I have to increase my expenses by seven-thousand-one-hundred-and-forty-nine. So I've attached the, the notice that I will be sending on to the Wisconsin Rapids Tribune, which reflects a projected change in fund balance of eleven-thousand-five-hundred-and-fifty-six. And even though that there, the adjustment has expenses exceeding revenues, I'm very confident that other areas in the budget will more than, more than make up for this. So I am requesting that the school board approve the attached revised budget for twenty-fourteen-fifteen.
So, second. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, thank you. And then, next Lynn, we're going to talk about the twenty-fifteen-sixteen preliminary budget.
Yes. Now, the preliminary budget is always tricky because, especially this year, because it's a biennial budget. Preliminary budgets have to be passed in June, so the district has, or the school board gives the administration authorization to spend monies on July one. However, even though you have to approve a preliminary budget in June, we know nothing. Nothing. So everything that we have is made up. There are no solid figures. You will hear other school districts talk about their mill rate went up by so much, their mill rate went down by so much, their expenses are exceeding, and all that is based on speculation, every single word of it. They spend hours with these preliminary budgets, and I absolutely refuse to do that because if I'm going to do, if I'm going to do a budget, I'm going to do it correctly. So this preliminary budget is just basically a reference, or what was presented from the performance, or from PMA, which is Prudent Man Advisors, it was presented with the financial forecast model back in January. I took what they did and I plugged it into the format that is requested by DPI. So if I have to defend any one of these numbers, I can't because I don't know anything yet. So I am asking the board to approve the preliminary budget. That is incorrect.
We do this every year.
Every year!
We have done it, and I will make that motion.
Second.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions? No? Okay. Then all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay Lynn, I think this is you also.
Yes.
We're going to talk about Fund Forty-Six.
Yes, I just want to go back, back and I'll bring the final budget, which is correct, in October.
Yes.
All right.
Just for our viewers.
Yes, yes, yes. And I'm working on it all the time, so. Okay, so Fund Forty-Six, we had a pretty good conversation last month about Fund Forty-Six, and I included the memo that was in your last month's work packet explaining what Fund Forty-Six was. So since last month, Terry and I did a lot, had a lot of conversations about Fund Forty-Six. And because we don't know where NACUSA is going to end up in the funding formula five years from now, we thought it would be a good idea to open a Fund Forty-Six. No matter what we put into Fund Forty-Six, we are going to have maintenance costs, and that's what Fund Forty-Six is. You're putting money aside to fund your maintenance. It just works better for a school district that isn't in negative tertiary. We're in negative tertiary. So basically, the more, or the less, the less we spend, the more aid we get. So it doesn't help us. It doesn't help us at all because we're going to be taking Fund Ten money and expenditure, raising our expenses, and then our state aid goes down. But we're going to put that money over into Fund Forty-Six, we're going to start saving for maintenance. If we change over here, if our funding formula, if NACUSA all of a sudden becomes positive tertiary, this is going to be very helpful to us. We're going to start shoving money into Fund Forty-Six because the more money we spend then, the more aid we get if we're in positive tertiary. So this is kind of a preemptive. We want to make sure that we're set for the future if that funding formula ever changes. So.
I really appreciate it.
So are we going to be in the negative foreseeable future? You don't know?
Well, I don't know.
Since you've been here.
We have been in negative, but we've been teetering too.
Okay.
So it could be one magical year, but we're not in negative tertiary.
Okay.
So these numbers that you have here for various building and grounds improvements over the next years, are just imaginary numbers for now?
They're, they are. We, Terry and I came up with this on a very quick basis. This can be changed by the board anytime, and it should be.
You have to have a plan in place.
Yes.
We need to talk about this.
Yep.
Yeah.
But you gotta have something to show that you're actually thinking about it. This is, this is stuff that's going to make sense to you when you look at it because it's stuff we've been talking about.
I don't think you have to worry about NACUSA school district. We are in very good condition.
I, do you want this in three motions, as describing the memo?
I do, yes.
I'll make the first motion to approve the ten-year-long, ten-year long-term capital improvement plan as presented.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carried, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution establishing a long-term capital improvement trust fund as presented.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carried, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve a transfer from the general fund ten to long-term capital fund, cap, one, capital improvement fund, Fund Forty-Six, in the amount of one-hundred dollars to be completed prior to June thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Now for one of the last requirements, is there has to be a segregated fund in order to keep track of this money. I will work with our Wisconsin Investment Cooperative to create another fund for us, so all of our monies are still in one spot then, so, which is still protected by FDICs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you for your work on this. And I would like to, you know, we got to get the findings on those numbers, let's end up board for the long-term stage and make that a point.
I agree.
When do we want to start working on it?
Well, I, could I recommend that we see where we go with the projects?
Project.
Because some of these may.
Yeah, we have, it sounds like we may have some money left over to do some of those things.
Let's keep our fingers crossed. So I don't know that we'd want to do it, I suppose it would help prioritize.
I think, you know, for facilities planning, you know, you know, track repairs, things of this, these issues, if it was on a paper plan, I think it would be helpful for the district, so.
Well, I would recommend that Steve Hersberg be involved in those too then.
Fantastic.
So would we want to get something on the calendar, like for?
Well, for my purposes, I'm kind of slammed until the end of July, so.
Spur kind of in my car.
Perfect, that sounds great.
I say we pile it on.
Hey, hey! Okay, I'm not too sure about writing anymore.
Diane, do you have a note? A note for August then? Can you make a note for August?
August isn't going to be a good month for school starting, but we'll kick the can there, August.
Rely on my experience, anytime we've ever built a project, I don't care what school it is, I can tell you how much money we had left when we finished. The middle school was seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand. So I expect.
Got a lease hack?
At, at least a half a million off of this project.
Well, let's shoot for that then.
That's cool.
That'd be great.
Call me in.
And there's other things we can do.
Yeah.
We tipped off our bucket list. Yeah. You know, with that money, we build that utility shed. Two of them, right there.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have approval of fifth grade position.
Do you need this done?
Do you want to get John? Well, actually, does the board need, does the board have any questions? We talked about this in pretty good detail last week at the board workshop.
For the staffing needs, yes. That's right.
I make the motion.
Okay.
Yeah.
We have a motion, we have a second. Brian has the second. All those in favor of hiring that fifth grade position, say, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, gentlemen. Consideration for Approval of Support Staff Compensation Evaluation Plan, Terry, you can, you can talk about this a little bit?
Yeah, if you quickly, do you have that called up on your computers? Just wanted to let you know, and I think we've been doing a pretty good job of keeping you up to date on where we're at with this, but this is the final product of work that's been going on for a year, a year and a half. And we actually met with the support staff, we actually, actually last week, we just had a celebration where they came forward and shared their, their learning on their PDPs, they did professional development plans this year. So next year, what, what happened when we started was we, we kept the evaluation plan and then we added the PDP. And really, one of the committee members said, why don't we just pull it together and have an evaluation plan with the PDP and the professional learning built right into it? So we took advantage of that great suggestion and really went out and did some digging and found other colleges, hospitals, we looked at several evaluation plans, and the administrative teams worked on this. You know, this has touched a lot of hands, so what we'd like to do is give it a try. I don't know, Mike or Nathan, do you have, or Lynn, do you have any comments?
All I'll say is that it's, it definitely looks like a positive step forward compared to what we've had.
Agreed.
And as I've, as I've been talking with support staff and, you know, the PDP and their evaluation stuff together, I, I think everyone, everyone said, why not put them together?
Yeah.
So it's a good step forward. That old, that old evaluation plan we, for document we had for support staff is all dated and really not serving a purpose, been purpose.
So that, you know, I think the support staff are most interested in knowing, I mean, this really sets a bar and, you know, allows them to know what we're expecting. So we certainly have built into it some areas where we've, you know, seen some challenges in the past and we can continue to, you know, to develop this as we go along.
The only thing I, if I could just add to this, that one hallmark of this is very modeled, very close to how we do the teacher evaluations in the sense that it's trying to be transparent of, like Terry said, expectations, not just an idea of here's where, by creating a rubric of, you know, here's expectations, but here's also an exceeding expectations means. That you can be able to look, not just to try and, here's a floor of, here's what's acceptable, but really try to get an idea of here's how to go ahead and develop and stretch, and have stretch goals and be able to have that embedded in the same process. And so what's been useful with that on the teacher side, that we're hoping for the same result from the, on the support staff side, is just really having good conversations about where we're at and what are the steps needing going forward. That makes it not just a once-a-year area, but helps make it functional and identifying where do we make incremental changes and how do those stack up.
I've been a member of that committee, but haven't been able to make too many of the meetings, and so I poured over that this morning and just kind of evaluated everything that was in there. I'm very impressed with the way it turned out because a lot of work went into that, it's a very comprehensive plan.
Well, in the PDPs at the celebration, I really was impressed with the caliber of some of the learning that is taking place that really is directly impacting kids, that wouldn't have happened if we just kept doing business as usual. And I, I don't know, Mike, do you want to just share one that jumped out, you don't have to mention name, but?
Well, I want to talk about a couple of them, if I may.
Yeah.
One, one person in our building was really the person that had a big load of the responsibility of basically the record-keeping and the communicating with students and staff regarding our guided academic resource process, our intervention that we added during, during the year, and really a contributing factor to our reduction in our failing grades. Another, another person that did a significant amount of work finding apps, iPad apps for some of our special needs students, and I, I've seen it when I've been in the classroom, kids excited about taking an iPad and, you know, I've sat down with them and they blow my mind away, you know, they're, you know, some of the things they're doing with the apps. And, and that was, you know, that was stuff that the teacher didn't have time to do and it was, it was, it was pretty impressive. And I'll just mention another one real quick. Our, our conference uses a program called Our School for Scheduling Athletic Events at the, at the middle school and high school level, and very much in its infancy for two years now, and one of our support staff people, along with our athletic director, has taken that kind of to a new step and actually is like one of the gurus now at the conference for some of the other things it can do, such as bus scheduling, official scheduling, officials' contracts. We're this close right now to it being computerized when we've got an official that's going to be working with a bet type coming over here electronically and, you know, official payments being made right off of that. And that person's kind of responsible for that and is one of the front runners in the conference. So there's, there's three of ours right there that we're really top of the line.
It's fantastic.
Yeah, so, I mean, lots of stories. So we all sat around tables over at the high school, had Sundays and shared stories about PDPs and our hope was, and actually the idea came from one of our support staff members, is that people would write some notes about, you know, plans for next year. So they'll all be working in new professional growth plans as well for next year, so we're looking for approval on that document.
Okay, we have a motion for approval.
Make the motion to approve the support staff compensation evaluation plan.
We have a motion, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, thank you, gentlemen. Who is leading the discussion on the overnight field trips tonight? Is that you?
Yeah, that, it's, you know, it's in board policy that if somebody's going over, someone's staying overnight, we'd like to keep that out in the open. Actually, the board policy says the superintendent can approve that, but I think, I think it serves us well, you know, to keep you guys in the loop, and that's our FDLA and FCCLA national leadership conferences that Jen and Laura presented on actually last month. That's what both of those are.
How's some more? All right, we have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thanks, Mike. Okay, next, recommendation for possible employment.
So Emily Radke, John, you want to talk about Emily Radke, C of USA?
Sure. Sure, over the course of the spring here, we interviewed a number of teachers for that position and Emily is a new person that we would recommend for hires for C of USA. She's working, she's actually done a little bit of orientation, guest teaching here this spring, and we were able to do that using our grant funds to do that, so I would recommend Emily as an individual that you would root for that position.
And she is, you know, another exciting part of this is her fiance, I think, is working at Dom Tower and I think securing some, a position there, so it's exciting that they're, they're going to be in the area together. So it's Emily. And any questions on that?
I think we got. I think we got...
You wanna do them all at once here?
Sure.
Would you meet them, Mike?
He didn't get introduced, but we saw her.
She was, she was...
She was ready to see what she knew what she was doing.
Alright, Mike, you wanna talk a little bit about...
Patricia Strainfelt, uh, four-hour cleaner position at the high school. Earlier this year, one of our eight-hour employees, um, took employment elsewhere, and the person that was the four-hour cleaner, through, after the interview process, we moved, moved up to eight-hour position. In that four-hour position, uh, we've, we've had many people in there, you know, one, trying to use it as a training grounds, and, uh, um, but through all of that, Patricia has been an anchor that has done, done well through that process. And unfortunately, we weren't able to bring her, bring a good employee on because we had policies that prohibited it. And recently, uh, it was, it was, uh, um, family members working with family members. Um, you know, the, we, we lost, we lost a good custodian when Tim, Tim resigned, uh, but, uh, it allowed us to, you know, basically make it official that Pat's the, hopefully make it official here soon, that Pat's the four-hour person, and she's, she's an anchor in that, in that job. She does really well. So, also...
Okay, we have a motion to accept, uh, employment for Emily Radke and Patricia Strainfelt.
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Can I bring, can I bring forward two more?
Three more, 'cause I did have Ashley too.
So, do you wanna talk about Karen, Susan, and...
And Ashley, sure. So, we had, uh, going through, and these are three of the four positions that we have, um, you know, open for next year. Some of this related to resignations that we talked about before, and then also related to Sage and our third-grade group. We have Ashley Engstrom is, uh, a teacher currently over in the eastern part of the state, over by Kowaskam, and she, um, has been teaching in a school, a lot of ESL experience, so that's exciting that she's going to be bringing that and third-grade teaching experience. Karen Kahler is coming to us from Nacitas, where she's been teaching, and she has nine years of teaching experience, six of those teaching first grade, which is where she will be teaching here at, at Humke pending approval. What's that?
Karen Kahler.
And then Susan Yonderd, it's J-A, and, but it's Yonderd. And, uh, she is coming from UW Lacrosse, and she has been doing some long-term substitute teaching in the Lacrosse and Onalaska area, but, uh, will be coming to us and be on the second-grade team. And then we are still working through any four positions, and nobody that to bring forward, but those three...
How many teachers did we have to look at to, uh...
How many were in the chat?
Well, um, we received, uh, 71 applications for the posting. Did, I did about, well, we had 15, um, phone interviews scheduled, but people were, it moved so fast that people were getting positions, being offered and accepting positions. And so, in fact, actually, this last round, um, I talked to the young lady on Friday, late afternoon, got her scheduled to come in on Monday afternoon, got an email from her Saturday night, I've accepted a position, I'm declining my interview. Um, but, and then we interviewed, uh, nine, we've interviewed nine people total so far here, you know, site-based interview. So, so that's where we're at to get, to get that.
Do you still have someone in the wings yet for this fourth position, or are you, are you still picking applications or what?
Uh, we're still working through the, the application pool that had closed, and so we're still working through that, that pool right now.
So, we need a...
Okay, so we're looking for a motion and a second to approve the, uh, employment for Ashley Engstrom, Karen Kahler, and Susan Yonderd.
Yonderd.
Yep.
So...
Also, second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you, gentlemen. Resignations.
Yes. Mrs. Lynn Jason, I'll read the letter if I could. Dear Mr. Whitmore, Nacoues's school board, please accept this letter of resignation for the 15-16 school year. I will not be returning to Nacoues's school district and in particular Humke Elementary in the fall. It was with a heavy heart that I made this decision for change, not only affects the individual, but also the other people that individual's path has crossed. I know in my heart that I made the right decision for myself, and I needed to make this change. Thank you for allowing me to be part of Nacoues's school district. I will cherish the students and families that I've worked with in my heart forever. Yours for kids, Lynn Jason. And then there's a quote at the bottom from Leo. Too often we underestimate the power of a touch, a smile, a kind word, a listening ear, an honest compliment, or the smallest act of caring, all of which have the potential to turn a life around. So, she's gonna be going down to, um...
Tell me what all that means.
I'll let you study it here.
I'll have you come up.
Interpret it? We'll talk later.
Very nice, so we're looking for a motion to accept resignation.
She is going down to try calling.
Okay. Lynn Jason. Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Donations, uh, Mr. Whitmore, is this the donation list right here?
Yes, indeed.
So, we have one donation, uh, to approve tonight, uh, or accept, and that is, uh, from Steve and Judy Rhenish for $50 for backpack for kids. We appreciate this donation very much. Looking for a motion and a second to accept this donation as presented. We have a motion, and I'll second it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you very much. What was the, uh, motion carried? We have some district policies that are on the second reading. We met last week and talked about them briefly. At this time, are there any questions or comments before we talk about, um, a motion for approval? Any questions or comments from anyone? Okay, would I...
So, approved.
Okay, so, so we have a motion?
Second.
We have a second. Uh, and, and I'll read the, uh, I'll read the policies that are getting approved. It's, uh, Family Medical Need Act, 1630.01, 3430.01, and 4430.01. Curriculum textbooks and instructional materials. Policy 2510, adoption of textbooks, and policy 2521, which is selection of instructional materials and equipment. Policy 3220, which is staff evaluation and educator effectiveness. Policy 7230, which is gifts, grants, and bequests. Policy 7440, which is facility security. Policy 7540.02, which is district webpage. Policy 7540.03, which is student education, technology, acceptable use, and safety. Policy 7540.04, which is staff education, technology, acceptable use, and safety. Policy 8500, which is food services. Policy 9210, which is parent organizations. Policy 8510, wellness. Policy 3217, 4217, and 7217, which is weapons. Policy 3211 and 4211, it's a whistleblower protection policy. And then policy 9150, school visitors. Policy 2421, career and tech, technical education program. Policy 2700, annual district report. Policy 3120, employment of professional staff, technical correction. Oh, that was a technical correction, okay. A lot of policies here. Policy 40, 4340, which is the grievance procedure. Policy 5451.02, technical excellence or education scholarship policy. And 5451.01, which is the Wisconsin Academic Excellence Scholarship. And policy 5516, student hazing. And policy 9270, private or, or tribal schooling. And, uh, two transportation policies, 8640, which is transportation for field and other district-sponsored trips, and 8680, which is the bus service contracts policy. So, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
You might wanna comment that all these policies were presented to us by Neola, our policymaker, and then they have, uh, lawyers on staff that review these policies for us, so that we don't have to do a whole lot of it, uh, creating...
That's right. That's right. It was several years ago, I think, we started the contract with Neola, so we get policy packets probably a couple times a year. We review the, uh, the policy changes that they present us, and then, uh, we, uh, we reply back to Neola, our contract service, with any changes in those policies, and then, of course, they come to the board meeting for approval. So, that's the process that you see in front of you. Next on the agenda is the approval, the consent of gentle, gentlemen, you all received the minutes, the regular board meeting minutes from May 12th, the treasurer's report and the check registers, so I'm looking for a motion for approval, folks.
Awesome.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Anyone wanna make any comments? Next on the agenda is closed session, so at this time, are there any comments before we, the board moves into closed session? Then, um, consideration of motion, motion to adjourn into closed session pursuant to section 19.851 C of the Wisconsin statutes, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercise responsibility. I assume, okay, we have a motion?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Pro call.
Pro call? Thank you, sir.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Uh, yes, for me, Mr. Geezy?
Yes.
Mr. Houston?
Yes. Okay, boards in, closed...